Counselperson Felder? Whitman?
Here.
Steelegrave?
Here.
Byning?
Excuse.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Present.
Mayor Clark?
Present.
I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, first item, please.
It's the approval of regular agenda.
Thank you. In order to work session, Mr. Pastu, there was an item that you're requesting. If you could review that, please, and then see the council's action.
Thank you, Your Honor. We were administrations requesting that City Council amend the agenda to place under council action an item to approve or ratify, ratify a memorandum of agreement with the Police Officers Association of Michigan and Command Officers Association of Michigan related to uniform cleaning allowance.
Okay, if there's any questions from council? If not, Councilwoman Lemoore?
Your Honor, I'd like to request that the agenda get amended to include consideration to ratify the agreements with the POAM and COAM for their uniform cleaning allowance.
Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Steelegrave to amend the agenda. Any comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read $865,104.86.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any item on the consent agenda? Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items from the consent agenda? CNN clerk, oh, I'm sorry, I did not clerk, Councilwoman Felder?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Lemoore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
We have nothing with the presentation, so the next items will be under council action. Item 3837, resolution authorization to submit spark grant application.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to introduce Lucy Fortin with Manneken Smith Group. Lucy and I have been working on a spark grant application for what we're calling the Monroe Greenway Loop Trail, and, you know, we've been working on with the bicycle and pedestrian trail project planned here in the last year, and we thought, given the timing of completion of that, as well as the spark grant, might as well pull the trigger as quick as possible. So if I could have Lucy just kind of walk through that a little bit with you?
Very good. Welcome. Good to see you, Lucy.
And nice to see you again tonight. So the state, the spark grant is really a state opportunity. It's a state ARPA funds that they're trying to distribute to local communities. They have $65 million to the DNR to give away. There's going to be three rounds. This is the first round due tonight, 11:45, and we'll all set up, and we're going to get that done. However, if, and there will be many, many applicants, and it's going to be very competitive. There are two other chances, and that's the way we look at it. So there's going to be three rounds. The first round is $15 million. The other two are going to be $25 million. They're coming up in spring and in summer of this year. These are for projects to really support, enhance, and improve health outcomes of residents in, in areas that are dense and would deserve that. So a lot of people are probably going to try for it, and they don't really meet the eligibility requirements. So we're hoping, as the city and where we're locating for this project, that we have a great chance for this. So hopefully, if we don't get this, we will get feedback and be able to resubmit, and that's, that's the intent. The Monroe Loop Greenway, which I show there, is the project we're proposing. It is the top priority recreational trail out of the plan that I discussed last week. So that is what the Trail Advisory Committee has recommended. And as you see, let me walk you through the project a little bit. If you see the graphic on the upper left corner, it would begin where the Monroe area Loop Trail ends, which is at Rossler and Fifth Street, continue onto Fifth Street right away, replacing the sidewalk, and as it, after Union Street, it will connect to the old railroad bed again and go to downtown using that old railroad bed and crossing a few streets along the way. It gets a little wider in places, and that's why we call it a greenway. It's going to be more of a park, a linear park. We're hoping to have wider path at that end, possibly more than just your straightforward pathway, and have also opportunities with landscaping, create plazas where it connects to sidewalks, with benches and places to stop, perhaps a map indicating where to go, kiosk, and that sort of features that would make this whole project more like a recreational trail, more like a park than just a straight path. The idea is to connect all the way to Smith Street, where you would then go on to an on-street system, which we talked a little bit about last week, and go reach Front Street via on-street shared lanes that you see there painted in green. So I'm at the bottom part of the, of the drawing, and, and it would connect then on Front Street bike lanes that hopefully will be there by then. And, and then connect on First Street, and the First Street goes all the way to Winchester, and now you have your complete loop. And that is really the hope that we're hoping for Monroe is to have that complete loop system, both on-street and recreational trails. So there's a project. We are asking for $875,000 for this grant. 250 of the project will be from the Roads and Trails village. So the total project cost is over $1 million. It includes, and this is what's unusual with this grant, it includes soft costs. So 25% of that total project cost is for engineering and other aspects of the project that we often refer to as soft costs. Any questions?
I'll see if there's any questions from council. Thank you, Lucy. I know that the additional information that comes out of the, this spark grant, and as this discussed through some cog and other places, additional funding that's available for some of the engineering and stuff like that, which is a plus than it wasn't, may not have been in the past, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no questions, thanks for the presentation. I know it's encouraging to see that we're moving items forward in this fashion, because I know that that's much sought after. It's next to the Loop Trail and continues our continuation of trails and non-motorized through, through the city. So thank you. Mr. Pastu, anything further?
Just asking. Sorry. I'm just asking for council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the submittal of the grant application.
Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yeah. Your Honor, I just make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the submittal of a spark grant application for the proposed Monroe Greenway Loop Project.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Steelegrave on item 3737, resolution authorizing to submit for the spark grant application. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 3828, change order, winter 202223 tree removals.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
I know at the last work session, there was discussion with City Council. Mr. Lewis had discussed another round of tree removals in which last year's contractor, I think it was TC.
TC.
Yep, was willing to hold their pricing for this winter, and Mr. Lewis identified $100,900 worth of work to be completed here in the city, along with a list of trees that were identified for removal, most of which, 36 out of 41, something like that, were silver maples. So. Oh, just so I also, you'll note on the following budget amendment that we do have that included in the budget amendments as well. So.
Thank you. Any questions for administration on, on this item 3828? CNN, a motion would be in order. Councilwoman Steelegrave?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Moved that the City Council awarded change order to the street tree removal contract for TC tree service for winter 202223, work in the amount of $100,900, that the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to execute the change order on behalf of the city of Monroe, and that the Assistant City Manager Finance Director be authorized to make any necessary transfers and set up any necessary accounts.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Steelegrave, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on item 3828, the change order for the winter 202223 tree removal. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item 3830, recommendation to upgrade four MDOT intersections to masked armed traffic signals.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, I know we had a conversation previous work session, we had it today's work session. Any additional information?
I think we had, Your Honor.
Well briefed?
Thank you.
Okay. Comments from council, or?
I have a question.
Oh, question. Councilwoman Germaine?
We're going to recommend that three of these go through and maybe not the fourth. Does the amount of money change?
Yes, I think it would be just to take a proportionate reduction of, from 320 to 240. It's a, for the three remaining. I'll be honest with you, it's probably going to be even more than that, because that intersection is probably the most complicated one for them to install masked arms. So that and in front, I guess, and Telegraph. But, but that's, but if you reduce it to 240, that would give you the three that I think we should probably be safe with that number.
Good question. Councilwoman Lemoore?
No, just to make a motion, Your Honor. The City Council authorized the Director of Engineering and Public Services to commit up to $240,000 in funding on the city's behalf to MDOT for the purpose of upgrading three locations to masked armed traffic signals as a part of their upcoming project. The proposed locations would not include the intersection at Seventh and Telegraph.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Steelegrave on item 3830, the recommendation to upgrade three MDOT intersections to masked armed traffic signals as amended by the motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is item 3832, excuse me, 3832, general fund budget amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu? I'll see if Mr. Sell's come up or not. Mr. Pastu?
Give a quick shot with it, Ed. You know, you have before you a budget amendment for the general fund, increasing essentially the end of the year revenues by a little over $87,500. A multiple of changes related to personnel items through there, as well as the most significant revenue increase is involving state shared revenues, as well as investment earnings going up as well. So, but it's inclusive of the tree removal item that we talked about. So.
Mr. Sell?
Thank you. I'd maybe add one more thing. The, you know, the state shared revenue and grant sign, one of the quirky things that goes on with governmental accounting is when you have a grant, if you don't, even if you expended all the money in the previous fiscal year, if you don't receive your grant payment within 60 days of fiscal year end, you can't count that revenue back to that fiscal year. So we had spent $800,000 for the DNR trust fund grant in the 2022 fiscal year, but we didn't receive any revenue related to those acquisitions until after August 31st. I believe it was around the end of September. So another reason that the 2022 results looked a little weird was because we had all those expenditures in there for those properties, but we didn't have any of the revenue associated with it. So our, the amount of reduction, or revenue less than expenditures was higher because of that. So that will, part of the reason that that revenue, state shared revenue number is going up, $929,000 this year, is that like $800,000 of that is that DNR trust fund grant revenue that's now coming in this fiscal year. So just wanted to pass that on.
Very good. Any further questions or thoughts from council? Looking for a motion. Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yes, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve an amendment to the 202223 general fund budgeting setting revenues to $21,645,342, and expenditures to $21,578,009 per the attached report.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine on item 3832, the general fund budget amendment. Any further comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. In our added item.
Our item that we added to the, this section of the agenda is an item to ratify a memorandum of agreement with POAM and COAM related to uniform cleaning allowance, and it will be assigned a number after the meeting.
Mr. Pastu, I don't know if there's anything additional. If not, we've discussed it in our work session, and you said the reason why it's being added. So.
Both parties took it out, or it was taken out and didn't catch it till after the fact, which occasionally happens with the collective bargaining process when you've made a lot of changes. So.
Very well. If there's no comments from council, a motion would be, Your Honor, Councilwoman Lemoore?
Yeah, I think, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the agreements with the Police Officers Association of Michigan and the Command Officers Association of Michigan for their uniform cleaning allowance.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Steelegrave on the item stated, a number to be added. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelegrave?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please. Council comments? Councilman Felder, December.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are certainly now in the midst of Advent and Hanukkah, and Christmas is around the corner, and after that, New Year's. So very happy holidays to whatever anyone is celebrating throughout this joyous season. That's all I have for this evening.
Very well. Councilwoman Whitman, comments this evening?
Yes, I would like to wish everyone a happy holiday. To be safe and enjoy yourself and love what you do, and we'll see you soon.
Next week.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Steelegrave?
Your Honor, I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays, Happy New Year, and our very own Michelle Pallett back there in Monroe County Radio, Happy Birthday. Thank you, Your Honor.
So thank you. Councilwoman Germaine?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank Ed Sell for another impeccable audit, as always, and it's really nice to see the Loop Trail finally come to fruition. I've been hearing about this probably for the last eight years, and finally, we're making some headway, and it'll be a great improvement to the city of Monroe. And happy holidays to everyone. Enjoy your family, and please stay healthy. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Lemoore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and see everybody next year. Thank you.
That's it. Thanks. All the wishes are by all the council, mine as well. And I'd ask the, you know, if you haven't had the opportunity to come downtown through the, you know, the tree lighting and his other activities, stop down, because I've seen people come here afterwards and stop and tour through the downtown. The DMBN has activities going as well, and I just want to wish everybody is safe and, I'll say, safe holidays, and hopefully shared with family and friends. And I want to thank again Mr. Sell, this was done for our audit and how we got where we are, and yet another year in a row of having, I guess, the best it can be for our audits. I appreciate that very much. Clerk Trezor LaVoy?
Just writing down all of your comments. Just real quickly, happy holidays to everyone, and all the very best wishes for a healthy and happy 2023. Hopefully, it's a good year for everyone. Stay safe. If we've been, we've been disappointed in some of the weather predictions in the last year or so, but if this one holds to be true, it has the potential to be nasty. So, you know, just make some preparations, and I hope everyone stays safe, and hopefully. So, you know, just make some preparations, and I hope everyone stays safe, and hopefully it won't be what they say it'll be. Finally, if you want to pay your property taxes before the end of the year, there are, you know, you can do that online, and you can drop it in our drop box. But if you prefer to pay in person, please just make sure that you check our website for the days that we will be closed, and that way you won't make a trip downtown that you don't need to make. So just a reminder to check that out, because we do have some days, holiday days for the cities coming up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, comments this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pat Weaver in our office, I'm going to have her certainly reach out to council. Councilmember Felder alluded to it during the work session about desire to have a special meeting, a special work session on Saturday, the 28th of January. The other thing with it is, I'll send out a note, and again, our next meeting is Tuesday, January 3rd, but I'm going to ask that I get two responses in accordance with our charter to treat it as a special meeting. My intent is to provide, the city attorney provide his quarterly litigation update. I've got a handful of other things to go with that as well. So, but I'd like to do that closed session there at 6 o'clock for our start. So other than that, thank you. I appreciate everybody for another excellent year here in town, and wish everybody happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu. Next, citizens' comments. Any comments from those present here this evening? Any comments from those present? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilwoman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Whitman.
Yes.
Steelgrave.
Yes.
Germani.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.